We'll call the meeting to order and I'll welcome everyone. This is the December 3rd, 2020 special call meeting of the City County Planning Commission. And I will ask Ms. Martin to please call and roll.
Yes ma'am. Commissioner Valance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vatelli?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Bogart? Commissioner Warren? Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am. Commissioners, you've all seen the copy of the November 19th summary minutes. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Being none, I'd ask for a motion, please.
Move.
Don't move.
Thank you ma'am.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks? Commissioners?
May it just last, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vatelli?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am.
This Runner, I request that you order the record for tonight's hearings include all statutory and regulatory provisions. The commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket and the qualification for each staff witness. Finally, I'd request that you administer the oath to those witnesses.
So ordered. Do you all swear to tell the truth before this commission?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. The subdivision plans that were in the packet, any questions on those? No questions? Letters to credit and performance bond. We have four items. Any questions? Then I'd ask for a motion, please.
Move.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Thank you ma'am.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vatelli?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Bogart?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am. I do not have any oath over business, so that will bring us to the first item for public hearing. Is docket number 202010 DP SP Investment Fund LLC and United Housing Partners, Bowling Green LP, have filed an application to amend the general development plan, the development plan conditions, on a tract of land containing approximately 2.53 acres located at 1149 College Street. This property is zoned planned unit development with a general development plan. And we will have the staff report from Ms. Ramsey.
Thank you Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on August 31st for the property you see outlined here in yellow. This property probably looks familiar to you, to some of you anyway, because we had a rezoning for this from central business to planned unit development earlier this year. Current use of the property is multifamily residential. And as you can see, this is just right up the road here, at least from where some of us are. But a mixture of uses in the downtown area, mainly single-family, commercial, public, public institutional, so forth. And the future land use map is mixed-use residential. We can go through a few of these slides as we go along, but I'll just kind of start. I'll jump into the staff report here. The applicants are requesting to increase the maximum number of units from 198, which was what was set at the rezoning earlier this year, to 203. The proposed density after that would be 80.24 dwelling units per acre. Not going to belabor too much in the staff report here, but on page two, under site design and compatibility review, speaking of density, the current density for the property, permitted density for the property is 78.26 dwelling units per acre. Again, the proposed density 80.24. Within a quarter mile, the property densities range from 0.55 dwelling units per acre to 170.22 dwelling units per acre. Average density in the area is 16.11 dwelling units per acre, and the median density is 8.85 dwelling units per acre. On page three of your staff report, you'll see the development plan conditions there. The only one proposed to change again is that maximum number of units. It currently reads maximum number 198, and the applicants are requesting to change that to 2 through 3. Below that, you'll see the zoning ordinance requirements to amend the general development plan. On page four, the applicants provided the following narrative to address that. They said, "In the original PUD submission, the two existing penthouses were planned to be converted into two large units, but we have now decided to convert them into six one-bedroom units, three in each penthouse, with affordability restrictions. A recent design exercise revealed there was an opportunity to include more units within each of the existing penthouse exterior envelopes. We believe that including additional penthouse units will increase the marketability of the building and allow us to offer additional affordable housing to low and very low-income residents." The focus 2030 category review on the same page of your staff report. There were nine items that were evaluated, two of which comply and seven of which are up to your determination. LU113, the planning commission should determine if the increased number of residential units is compatible with the area. LU25, if the proposed increase in density will protect nearby neighborhoods. LU252, if the proposed increase in density is compatible with the surrounding area. HN1, HN3, HN13, excuse me. Planning commission should determine if the proposal is a suitable infill project that will maintain or improve the existing character and pattern of development within the area. And HN21, HN4, if the proposal encourages a diversity and array of housing options. Going back to the first page of your staff report, where there are three points to consider. Number one, the only thing proposed to change as a part of this application is increasing the maximum number of units from 198 to 203. Two, the proposed development plan amendment remains consistent with the flume and the mixed-use residential designation. And three, the proposed development plan amendment complies with the applicable criteria addressed in the site characteristics review and complies with a majority of the review criteria for site design. That is all I have for the staff report. I can answer any questions you may have, or I believe the applicants are with us as well, and they could answer any questions too, I'm sure.
Thank you ma'am. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Ramsey before we hear from the applicant?
Monica, is there plenty of parking for this to happen?
Commissioner Clark, if you recall, when the PUD zoning occurred earlier this year, parking was part of the reason behind that request to PUD. The applicants may want to speak more to that a little bit, but given the, primarily the tenants who live in that building, the parking standard that they came up with was sufficient for that. But like I said, they may want to address that a little bit further, but the parking was not proposed to change or increase or anything with this particular application.
Yeah, I did that a little bit. My name is Bryce Frisher. I am one of the architects on the project.
Excuse me sir, can we get your address also? This is Valance. I need to swear you in.
Okay, it is, you want my business address?
That would be fine.
235 South 14th Street in Baton Rouge, Louisiana.
And you swear to tell the truth before this commission?
I do.
Thank you sir. Now you can go ahead. I apologize for interrupting.
Oh, it's okay. But I was going to speak towards the parking comment. There currently is 139 parking spots out there. And the building is currently fully rented, and there's several parking spots. I mean, probably 30, 40 parking spots that are unused all the time. So we feel like the parking that is provided is sufficient. There is opportunity actually to increase the parking count just by restriping, but at this time, we didn't really feel like it was necessary, given that the current parking capacity seems to be working.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Do we have any questions or opposition from anyone else online? No questions, no opposition, then I will call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed general development plan amendment, docket number 202010 DP. Based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by compliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Further, I also find that there have been major changes of economic, physical, and social nature within the area of property in question, and I request that the findings of fact and recommendation include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing. Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham? Commissioner Graham?
Pardon me, I was muted. Yes ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vatelli?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Bogart?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am. The motion carried, and thank you all. The next item, docket number 202011 DP. Chris and Monique Russell and Barry and Shirley Locke have filed an application to amend the general development plan, which the development plan conditions, a tract of land containing approximately 4.7866 acres located at 518 Cemetery Road. The property is zoned RE, which is residential estate with a general development plan. And again, the staff report will be Ms. Ramsey.
Thank you Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on October 9th for the property you see outlined here in yellow. As Chair Runner has stated, that property is zoned residential estate. Its current use is single-family residential. And in that area, you've got a lot of agriculture, a lot of single-family residential, some vacant, and public institutional in blue there. Future land use map designation is low-density residential. And I will leave this up that we can reference as we go along if need be. But the applicants are requesting this evening to increase the maximum number of lots from one to two. So when the property was rezoned in 1986, to what was R1 at the time, there was a stipulation, a binding element put on the property, that there could only be one lot on the 4.7866 acres. And so the applicants would like to amend that this evening, which would take that proposed density to 0.42 dwelling units per acre. Noting on the first page of your staff report, under compatibility with surrounding development, there are several mature trees on the property. There's also a sinkhole located on the site, and there are also designated drainage retention areas located on the property, as you can see here on the paper. On page two of your staff report, just note that prime farmland, the property contains a soil type that's classified as farmland of statewide importance and contains soil types that are classified as somewhat limited and very limited in regard to soil suitability for septic tank absorption fields. Site design and compatibility review, we'll just note that within a quarter mile, densities range from 0 to 2.16 dwelling units per acre, with both a median and average density of 0.69 dwelling units per acre. Within a half mile, densities range from 0 to 2.69 dwelling units per acre, with a median density of 0.60 dwelling units per acre and average density of 0.63 dwelling units per acre. Surrounding architectural features, homes on properties located between River Green Lane and Hillcrest Road, Fronting Cemetery Road, or SB Thomas Road, range from one to two stories in height. Majority of homes have a two-car attached garage. Home sizes range from 914 square feet to 5,489 square feet. Median home size is 1,935 square feet, average is 2,423 square feet. Building materials, the majority of homes on properties located between River Green Lane and Hillcrest Road, Fronting Cemetery Road or SB Thomas Road are comprised of brick, stone, or concrete siding with brick or stone foundations. Several homes also incorporate vinyl as exterior material, and several homes also have plain-faced block foundations. Building orientation, existing structures in the vicinity have a mix of building orientations with both front and rear facades oriented to face Cemetery Road. Now for the proposed development plan conditions, you see there were originally two there. They've been crossed out, and now there are nine. I'll go ahead and read those. Number one, has been stricken and replaced with the property will have a maximum of two building lots of record. Number two has been stricken and replaced with any new residence will have a minimum of 1,900 square feet of heated living space, exclusive of garages or porches. And the rest of these are all new. Number three, any new residence will be constructed of at least 50% brick, ephist, stone, masonry, or cementous material. No plain-faced block is permitted as an external facade. Split-faced block may be used on building foundations only and not as the primary building material for external facades. Number four, the existing residents will continue to utilize the existing septic system located on the property. In the event the existing homes that are replaced, the Barren River District Health Department shall inspect the current system and/or issue a permit for a new septic system prior to any new home being constructed on the property. Number five, prior to recordation of a plat, the proposed lot will be approved for an onsite septic system by the Barren River District Health Department. Number six, access to the property will be coordinated with the Warren County Department of Public Works and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. Number seven, all utility improvements will be located underground. Number eight, existing mature vegetation will be preserved to the greatest extent feasible, with exceptions for building envelopes and driveways. And number nine, any existing sinkholes within close proximity of new development on the property will be identified and repaired prior to development. Any existing sinkholes within established drainage areas will remain undisturbed if outside the proposed area of development. On page four of your staff report, you see again there the zoning ordinance requirements to amend the general development plan, and the applicant submitted the following narrative to address those items. The existing DPCs were put in place 34 years ago, and over that time, the development has continued to create smaller lots of record ranging from approximately 0 to 2.5 dwelling units per acre. The applicants are only proposing one additional lot, which would result in an approximate density of 0.42 dwelling units per acre. The subject property has sufficient existing infrastructure to support the additional lot. The applicants respectfully request you approve this amendment and the revised development plan conditions. On the focus 2030 category review, there were 16 items. There were six left up to your determination. Those are LU113, if the addition of one more single-family residential lot is compatible with the area. LU2 and LU21, if the proposed DPCs incorporate elements that will result in a high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. HN1 and HN13, if the proposal is a suitable infill project that will maintain or improve the existing character and pattern of development within the area. And HN21, if the proposal will promote a diversity of housing types in the area. Going back to the first page of your staff report, where there are three points to consider. Number one, the proposed development plan amendment remains consistent with the flume and low-density residential designation. Number two, the proposed development plan amendment complies with the applicable criteria addressed in the site characteristics review and complies with a majority of the review criteria for site design. And number three, the planning commission should consider if the additional lot that is proposed is compatible with the surrounding area. That is all I have for the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and I believe the applicants are with us.
Thank you ma'am. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Ramsey?
Monica, I have two questions if I may. The first is, in your view, how do the development plan conditions fit the neighborhood, more specifically, the split-face block foundation? Is that something that would be seen in that area?
There are homes that have plain-faced block foundations. Some have brick or stone foundations. So that's what staff found in the evaluation of the area. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Thank you. Building orientation doesn't appear to be addressed here. Do we know how this build, how the new structure would be oriented? And even, I guess, another question as I think through that, where would the driveway for this new structure? Would it access the front behind, I suspect, if it faces Cemetery Road? I guess that would be SB Thomas Road.
Yeah, I mean, the applicant may want to speak more to that, but as far as access, they did agree in their development plan conditions that they would coordinate with Warren County Public Works or KYTC as necessary. Of course, just the preliminary drawing here shows the lot on SB Thomas Road. But they did not give any indication as far as orientation of the front of the structure.
And does staff have any preferences for orientation?
Along Cemetery Road, we had noted that there's a mix of building orientations, front and rear facades. But I guess that would kind of be left up to your all's determination if you thought something would be appropriate for this particular application.
Right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there any drawing that shows where they're talking about putting this lot? With these major drainage areas, I'm not sure how they're going to fit a house. Or can they build in a drainage area?
They cannot build in a drainage area. They would not be able to do that or any easement or anything like that unless they got that revised somehow by replating the property. But this is, what you see here is what we have turned in as far as the preliminary drawing. But they may be able to address that further if you would like them to expand on that a little bit.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Monica, it appears that the drawing you have there may be different than the drawing, I'm sorry. It is not different than the drawing you have in our packet. There's a backside to that. I stand corrected. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions before we hear from the applicant? No other questions, then we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Chris. On this lot, we have talked with some neighbors who have indicated that they have family that would be interested in selling.
Sir.
Yes.
Would, Ms. Runner needs to ask you some questions.
Okay.
We need to get your name and address.
Chris Russell. Post office box 132. Partyville, Kentucky.
And you swear to tell the truth before this commission?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. You can go ahead now. I apologize for having to interrupt you.
That is fine. As I was saying, on this lot, we've had some neighbors indicate interest that they had family members who would like to be close to them and perhaps build if we were able to get this approved and sell a lot. So that's why we are doing this. As for the orientation, I had assumed it would face SB Thomas Road. But since the drive would come in off of SB Thomas Road. I have nothing else to add unless you have questions.
So Mr. Russell, my name is Hamp Moore, and I'm the attorney, and I'm realizing that I just was speaking over Mr. Graham. So let me defer to him for a minute, and then I'll try to maybe come in and address my questions at the end.
Yes, sir.
Hey, sorry Hamp, I'll be very, very brief. Mr. Russell, the current residence on the lot, does it face SB, is it SB Thomas Road? Or does it face Cemetery Road?
SB Thomas.
The house that is there now faces Cemetery Road. Has the drive that comes in off Cemetery Road and also off of SB Thomas.
See, okay, thank you.
But Tim, looking at what they've sent us for the drawing, where they're going to split the lot, there's no way, I mean, it'll have to go to.
Yeah, I realized that after I asked.
There'd be no road frontage on Cemetery Road.
Yeah, and the drainage is all in the back, so it'll have to be up front on that lot.
Okay, makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you talked to the Public Works Department about ingress and egress?
I have not.
Sandy, I think they've only got one option.
There's no road frontage.
They have no road frontage to Cemetery Road. It's going to have to go on SB Thomas.
Okay, well, that's what I kind of thought, but I thought, maybe, okay, I was just kind of mixed up there. Thank you, guys.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Mr. Russell? Mr. Moore, did you have a follow-up?
All of my questions were answered, Ms. Runner. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone in opposition to this request or would have a question from the audience? No one from the audience with a question? No opposition? Then I would ask for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed general development plan, docket number 202011 DP. Based upon the testimony and document presented in this public hearing, the proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with the focus 2030 plan, comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action items presented by the staff report. Further, I also find there have been major changes of economic, physical, or social nature within the area of the property in question. I request that the findings of fact recommendation include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you. Sir, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vatelli?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bogart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. The motion carried, and I thank you all. The next item is docket number 202014 Flume. Andrew Scott and Jennifer Brooks and Ronald and Betty Brooks have filed an application for a future land use map amendment on tracts of land containing approximately 6.346 acres located at 0 and 3354 Hunts Bend Road from agriculture to rural density residential. And also on docket number 202057 Z County, those same applicants have filed to rezone that same land on that same property from agriculture and residential estate to rural residential with a general development plan. And we'll have the staff report from Ms. Hurt.
Thank you Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on October 5th for the properties you just described located on Hunts Bend Road. I'm not going to belabor this too much. This one is pretty straightforward. There are currently two lots, and there are a total of two lots proposed. The only thing proposed to change is the zoning classification and the configuration of the two existing lots. And so I'm going to jump to the preliminary development plan that was submitted. Okay, so here is the proposed lot configuration here. So regarding the future land use map amendment, there is an amendment proposed to amend the future land use map to rural density residential. to amend the future land use map to rural density residential. This future land use designation applies to those areas relatively close to the suburban fringe and also applies to areas where property fragmentation has occurred within unincorporated areas of Warren County. D densities in this future land use category range from zero to one dwelling units per acre. LU 1.1.4 outlines the procedures for amending the future land use map. And the applicants did supply the narrative there. Midway down on page two, I'm gonna jump back to the future land use map while I read this. Says that the proposed zoning of rural residential is compatible to recent amendments at 3600 Hunts Bend Road, May 3, 2018, and 3850 Hunts Bend Road dated 8/23/18. And those future land use map amendments are depicted on, depicted on the screen on the future land use map here before you. The applicants also supplied development plan conditions concurrently with their rezoning application to help address compatibility of the proposed development. Going to jump onto the site design and compatibility review section. Staff has noted that the average density in the area is roughly 0.21 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density is 0.32 dwelling units per acre. Under surrounding architectural features, the median home size in the area is 2,241 square feet with an average home size of 2,190 square feet. Building materials review, a little over half of the homes in the area are vinyl with the remainder being a mixture of brick, stone, metal, wood, and poured concrete. About a third of the homes have a brick or stone foundation with the remainder having a mix of plain face block, split face block, poured concrete, and post and pier foundations. Moving on to the development plan conditions. Number one looks at septic considerations. Two, a prohibition of mobile or manufactured homes. Three, sets a minimum home size of 1,600 square feet exclusive of garages and porches. Four, outlines proposed building materials. Five, addresses access to the property. Six, preservation of vegetation currently on the property. And seven looks at sinkhole considerations. Under the Focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated 15 items. Eight of those were found to be in compliance, while seven are up to the planning commission to determine compliance. The first of those, LU 1.1.1 and LU 1.1.2, which look at Floom compliance, and LU 1.1.3, which looks at compatibility. Next, LU 2, the planning, planning commission should evaluate the quality of the proposed development. Next, NCR 241, which looks at development pressures on the countryside. And finally, HN 2.1 and HN 4, which look at suitability of the development and housing options in the area. With that, I'll wrap up on page one with our points to consider. First, the planning commission should determine if the proposed Floom amendment meets the criteria outlined in LU 1.1.4, and if the proposed zone change would be consistent with the future land use map and rural density residential category. Second, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria with exceptions noted regarding road width. Third, the proposed development applies with the majority of their review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And last, compatibility should be determined by the planning commission. That is all I have for the staff report. I know throughout, I went through that fairly quickly, but I'm happy to jump back and go into detail on any of the items if, if you see that that's necessary.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you have any questions for Ms. Hurt? No questions? Do we have anything that the applicant would like to add? Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? No questions? Do we have anyone online with a question or with opposition to this request?
I apologize, I was muted there. I, I do have one question. I assume this may be directed to Hamp. Hamp, as I read Development Plan Condition Number 4, there seems, my reading seems to indicate a contradiction. It says plain and split-faced block are permitted only for building foundations and not as primary facade materials. It goes on to read, plain face block is furthermore prohibited as a visible finished exterior material for building foundations. So one indicates to me that it is permitted. The first sentence seems to indicate that it is. The second sentence seems to indicate that it is not. Could we get a clearer representation of the applicant's intent on number four?
Commissioner.
Mr. Graham, I think you're right, but let Rachel try, and then we can go to the applicant if she's unable to.
Commissioner Graham, I believe the intent there was to allow plain face block if, if they wanted to utilize a brick or stone veneer in conjunction with that, but not to prohibit it altogether as a material if they wanted to cover it with something else.
I see. So in that case, Hamp, the, the, the block would be the structural component, and then the, the brick would be the facade. So could you wordsmith that to be just a little clearer, and maybe we could get the, the applicant's blessing on that?
Yes, sir. Oh, just a minute. So let me see if I can understand the the construction. So plain face block would be permitted if it were a structural component that was covered with a brick veneer?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And it may be better, and I think what we've done in the past is we've simply addressed the veneer portion because it's really the only relevant portion of that, of that statement.
So if the final sentence of DPC, General Development Plan Condition Number 4, would it be, get the job done if we said plain face block is only permitted as a structural component for building foundations?
That would be accurate, and.
And, and must be covered with a brick veneer?
Well, if they do, yes, perhaps even a better suit for this may be that a split-faced block foundation is permitted. And also a brick veneer foundation is permitted. But a plain face block foundation is not permitted.
I understand, I think, I understand what you're saying. And I think, one, we need to make sure Jessica has recorded that sufficiently, and then once she gives us permission, we'll ask the applicant to come up and express their opinion on it.
Right, thank you.
Yes, Jessica, have you got that?
I do, sir.
All right. So the applicant, which of the applicants are present here tonight? Brooks?
I'm Andrew. I'm present.
Okay, is that Andrew Brooks?
Yes, sir.
And if you direct your attention to Ms. Runner, she'll ask you some questions, and then I've got a question for you.
Okay.
Mr. Brooks, if you would state your name and address for us, please.
Andrew Brooks, 3354 Hunts Bend Road, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
And you swear to tell the truth before this commission?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Brooks, I'm Hamp Moore. I'm the lawyer for the Planning Commission. Did you hear the discussion with Mr. Graham and I over the use of plain face block for foundation purposes?
I did. It, it will be covered in brick, and the house will be stone and hardy board.
And, and so I take it then you would agree to amend DPC Number 4 to, as, as read by Mr. Graham when he spoke just a few minutes ago?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And are you here tonight with authority to bind not only yourself, but your wife and the other owners?
Yes, Ronald Brooks is here with me also.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any way Jessica could read that back so we can know what that says? Sure. Split-faced block and/or a brick veneer are permitted for, for building foundations. Plain face block is prohibited.
That's absolutely correct.
I think she did a better job than I did.
I think she did a better job than I did as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions, commissioners, or Mr. Brooks? No other questions. Do we have anyone online who is in opposition to this request? Anyone with a question? No one? Then I would, then I would ask for a motion, please, and this will take two actions. The first on the Floom amendment and the second on the zone change request. I will call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, Docket Number 202014 Floom. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, proposed Floom amendment has met the directive to amend the Floom as outlined in LU 1.1.4 in the Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bogart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Runner? Yes, ma'am. The motion carried, and so now we need to act on the zone change request.
I make a motion to approve proposed zoning map amendment together with addition upon the general development plan, Docket Number 202057Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the, in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bogart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner? Yes, ma'am. The motion carried. Our recommendation will be for approval. Thank you all. The next item, Docket Number 202058ZVG. New Millennium Real Estate LLC has filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing 0.892 acres located at 522, 524, and 526 East, East 7th Avenue and 0615 and 631 Chestnut Street from general business to RM4 multifamily residential with a general development plan. And also on Docket Number 2020B16, those same applicants filed for a variance on that property at that location, and the property is currently zoned general business.
Chair Runner, just before we get started here, I just want to make a note that Commissioner Vitale has recused herself from this application. Just wanted to note that because not everybody can see everybody.
Thank you, sir. I believe we have the staff report from Ms. Hurt.
Thank you, Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on August 28th for the properties you just described on Chestnut Street and East 7th Avenue. The proposal involves the construction of 26 multifamily residential units, and there's also a variance request filed concurrently with the rezoning application, requesting a variance from the front yard setbacks on Chestnut and East 7th, which I'll get to in just a second. As you mentioned, the current zoning of the property is general business. And worth noting, this particular zone does allow multifamily development, however not the proposed density of 29.11 dwelling units per acre, which was the need for this rezoning application that's before you this evening. The future land use designation is mixed-use residential. And while RM4 is not generally considered compatible in the mixed-use residential future land use category, given the location of this particular development and the future land use category description that encourages a variety of housing types and densities in the historic core of downtown Bowling Green, where higher density residential development is prevalent, staff felt that a future land use map amendment was not necessary for this particular application. However, compatibility of the proposed development, including the proposed density, should still be evaluated by the planning commission. Moving on to the site characteristics review section. Here's the proposed preliminary development plan. You can see that the proposed building is situated along the frontage of both Chestnut Street and East 7th Avenue, with parking proposed to the rear of the development. Access to the property would be from Fairview Court here, which is on the right-hand side of the screen. Moving down to cultural or historical features, the existing residences located on the properties were constructed in the early 1900s and are proposed to be demolished if this proposal is approved. None of the, none of the structures are locally designated historic properties, nor are they listed on the National Historic Register. Moving on to site design and compatibility. Under density, we've noted that existing residential properties within a quarter of a mile have densities ranging from zero to 60.87 dwelling units per acre with a median density of 9.24 dwelling units per acre and an average density of 12.96 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density is 29.11 dwelling units per acre. Jumping down to the development plan conditions. Number one limits the maximum number of units to 26. Two, looks at building materials. Three, building orientation. Four, community mailbox system. Five, preservation of existing vegetation. Six, location of parking. Seven looks at open space. Eight addresses access to the property. Nine requires underground utilities. And 10 requires donation of salvageable items from the existing residences prior to demolition. Jumping down to the Focus 2030 category review. There were several items that staff evaluated. Two of those items were found to be out of compliance, while 13 were deemed that the planning commission should evaluate those for compliance. The first, dealing with LU 1.1.2 and 1.1.1 and 1.1.2, which are, look at future land use map compliance and LU 1.1.3, which looks at compatibility. LU 2 and LU 2.1, which look at quality and character of development. Next, LU 2.1.1, which looks at open space and new residential development. Jumping down to LU 252 and HN 1.2, which look at infill development and compatibility of infill development. LU 253, which looks at redevelopment opportunities. Next, NCR 25 and 253, those are the two items that are not in compliance. Those are historic preservation considerations, and again, the existing homes are proposed to be demolished. However, the applicants again did agree to donate any salvageable materials prior to demolition. HN 1 and HN 1.3, which look at character and pattern of development. And then last, HN 2.1 and HN 4, which look at suitability and housing options. Jumping on to page five of your staff report, we've got the references for the variance request. And you'll see that the section from the zoning ordinance that these variances are requested come from 454B and 454C1, which require a front yard setback along all frontages for a corner lot, meaning that there would be a front yard setback required along East 7th Avenue and Chestnut Street. And the applicants are requesting a variance of 20 feet from the required 25-foot setback for the front yard setback to be five feet. And in order to address the variance findings outlined in KRS 10243, the applicants supplied the narrative about three quarters of the way down page five of your staff report. This narrative states that with the continued redevelopment of the downtown area in mind, the applicant would like to redevelop this property with multifamily units for those who want to live downtown and not have the hassle of maintaining their own property. The applicant is trying to model this property closely with the recently developed Lennox Place just one block away. The applicant prefers to have the building up close to the sidewalk with the parking in the rear of the development where it is hidden from street view. It is with this in mind that the applicant requests the 20-foot variance from the typical 25-foot front yard setback along East 7th Avenue and Chestnut Street. The applicant believes this variance will not cause a hazard or nuisance to the public to the adjacent, to the. to the adjacent, to the adjoining parcels, nor it is an, is it an unreasonable circumvention of the requirements of the zoning regulations. Jumping back to the points to consider on page one. First, the Planning Commission should determine compliance with the future land use map and mixed-use residential category. Second, the proposed development complies with the majority of the Site Characteristics Review criteria, with the exception of the front yard setback for which the applicants have requested a variance. Third, the Planning Commission should determine if the requested variance meets the required findings outlined in KRS. Fourth, the proposed general development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And last, again, compatibility should be determined by the Commission. That is all I have for the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know the applicants and their engineers are also on the line.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
This is Commissioner Graham. I do have one question. You alluded to modeling this or patterning it after another development. Does that development have, have the building this close to the sidewalk?
Commissioner Graham, if I, I don't know if that's actually shown on the aerial view in your packet. Let me see which page that would be.
But I might not be looking in the right spot.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit different. It's zoned PUD. And so generally in our downtown areas, we would encourage the buildings to be pulled up closer to the roadway with the parking to the rear. It just so happens, oh, I went one slide too many. So Lennox Place is this, can you see my hand? The PUD designated property here, just one block up. And so with that particular development, they were able to set their own development standards, which included basically designing their setbacks similar to what is proposed because it was a PUD. The only difference with this particular development is that it did not meet the one-acre minimum lot size required or development size required to request a PUD zoning. And so the only option that was left was essentially to request RM4, which would allow the density that's proposed in conjunction with the variance for the front yard setbacks along Chestnut and East Seventh. But this is typical of other development that we would find in, in the vicinity and in the downtown area.
I see. So, so in essence, the staff finds this more desirable to move it closer and then put the parking in the rear. Okay.
Yes, versus, you're welcome, versus having the, the building setback off the, the sidewalk with the parking out front.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any issues with having the patios and/or porches there five foot off the street? Any theft or any issues like that? That seems awfully close to a sidewalk for someone to just take something off your porch or your patio.
You are, I think you already have it in two or three places down at downtown on some development they've already done. I don't, not to my knowledge, they've had any real issues with that.
Any other questions, Commissioners, from Ms. Hurt before we hear from the applicant? No other questions? Is there anything that the applicant would like to add?
This is Mike Vice Halli. I hope you can hear me. I have nothing to add unless there are some questions that I can address.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions for Mr. Vice Halli? Commissioners? Do we have anyone online with questions or opposition to this request? No other questions? No one in opposition? Then I would ask for a motion, please, and again, we'll need to reverse the Zone Change.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and condition upon the General Development Plan, docket number 202058ZBG. Based on the testimony and documents based presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and the action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Will you use a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Valance?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Runner? Yes, ma'am. The motion carried. Our recommendation will be for approval, and now we need to act on the variance request.
I make the motion to approve the request of the variance at 0615 and 631 Chestnut Street and 0524 and 526 East Seventh Ave., docket number 2020B16, a variance of 20 feet from the required front yard setback of 25 feet. The testimony presented in this public hearing has shown that granting this variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare. It will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity, will not cause a hazard or nuisance to the public, and will not allow an unreasonable circumvention of requirements of the zoning regulations.
Thank you, sir. Will you use a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair.
Yes, ma'am. The motion carried. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The last items tonight, docket number 202015 Flume, Justin Brown, Christian Chandler, and the estate of Dicky McKinney, Care Brandon McKinney, have filed an application for a future land use map amendment on tracts of land containing approximately 6.110 acres located at 0 and 325 Lewis Road from agriculture to rural density residential. And then on docket number 202059Z County, those same applicants have filed to rezone that same land from agriculture and residential estate to resonate with the general development plan. And I believe we have Ms. Hurt for staff report.
Thank you, Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on September 30th for the properties you just outlined on Lewis Road. I will note that this proposal is very similar to the Huntsman Road application that was also on the docket this evening, and that there are currently two lots that are in existence, and the proposal involves a total of two lots when it's all said and done here. And so I'll jump to the preliminary lot layout so you can get an idea of what the proposal involves. But currently, we, here we go. So you can see that the, the proposed reconfiguration of the lots is just proposing to tweak the lot sizes here. The future land use map amendment is needed solely for the fact that there's an existing ag tract that's five acres or greater in size, and so the proposal would be reducing the acreage of that particular lot. However, again, there are only two total lots proposed. The proposed future land use map amendment is to go to the rural density residential future land use category. I'm not going to read that again since I touched on it earlier this evening. LU 1.1.4 again outlines the procedures to amend the future land use map. And the applicants have stated, as a part of their future land use map application, that the existing lot has over 396 feet of frontage on Lewis Road and is just over six acres in size. As there is already two building lots of record, and there will still only be two building lots of record, the proposed change is clearly compatible with the surrounding lots on Lewis Road. The applicants have also submitted development plan conditions with their rezoning application that was filed concurrently with the future land use map amendment application. With that, I'll jump on to the Site Design and Compatibility Review section of your report on page three. Density in the area range from 0 to 9.02.94 dwelling units per acre with a median density of .18 dwelling units per acre and an average density of 0.25 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density is 0.33 dwelling units per acre. Home sizes range from 1,345 square feet to 4,001 square feet with a median home size of 2,136 square feet and an average home size of 2,301 square feet. Under Building Materials Review, about half of the homes in the area are brick, with roughly the other half comprised of vinyl. The majority of homes have a brick or stone foundation. A few homes have a split face block foundation. Moving down to the development plan conditions, number one, there shall be a maximum of two lots. Two includes considerations for onsite septic systems. Three sets a minimum home size of 1,800 square feet excluding garages and porches. Four requires a two-car garage with a side-facing entry. Five outlines building materials that are proposed for any new residents on the property. Six, plain face block will not be allowed, and split face block will only be allowed for building, building foundations and not as a primary facade. Seven looks at preservation of existing vegetation located on the property. Eight addresses access to the property. And nine includes considerations for sinkholes. Moving on to the Focus 2030 category review, the staff evaluated 15 items. Eight of those were found to be in compliance, while seven items are up to the Planning Commission to consider for compliance. First, LU 1.1.1 and LU 1.1.2, which look at future land use map compliance and LU 1.1.3, which deals with compatibility. LU 2, quality of development. NCR 241, which addresses development pressure on the countryside. And last, HN 2.1 and HN 4, which looks at development suitability and housing options. Back on page one, our points to consider. Again, the Planning Commission should consider if the argument provided by the applicants to amend the future land use map meets the criteria in LU 1.1.4. If approved, the rezoning application would be consistent with the future land use map. Next, the proposed development complies with the majority of the Site Characteristics Review criteria, with exceptions noted regarding road width. Third, the proposed development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And again, compatibility should be determined by the Planning Commission. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hurt. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Hurt? No questions. Do we have anything that the applicant would like to add?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, this is Jase Caldwell with Band Meter and Slavy, 1015 Shive Lane. Swear to tell truth.
Thank you.
I do have, I did not realize, when I was helping the applicants make the development plan conditions, I did not realize that I had left side-facing entry garages. If that would be okay with you guys, I'd like to take that off of the development plan conditions. That's number four.
To remove with the side-facing entry.
Please. Would you like to allow front-facing garage entries? Is that correct?
I would.
Any other comment? That you'd like to make? Any questions from Commissioners?
Yep, Ms. Runner, if I might. Jase, I do not believe that you are one of the owners. Am I correct about that?
Correct, but I do have.
I am.
Yes, sir.
So, in, in order to delete DPC number four, I'd like for Mr. Chandler, Mr. Brown, or Mr. McKinney I to, to agree to that amendment.
Yeah. Mr. Chandler and I agree.
So, Mr. Brown, is that Justin Brown?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you direct your attention to Ms. Runner, she'll need to get, need to ask you some questions.
Just state your name and address for us, please.
Justin Brown, 1021 Woodburne Allen Springs Road.
And you swear to tell the truth before this commission?
Swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Brown, I'm Hamp Moore, and I'm the attorney for the Planning Commission. Are you one of the owners for this development?
Applicant, yeah.
And do you have authority to speak for the other owners? Yes.
See if the other owners are on the court.
Yeah. Is it your request that DPC number four be deleted?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
May I have clarification on that? Are we deleting the entire thing, eliminating the two-car garage, or just the side-facing entry?
I believe that we're going to delete with a side-facing entry on number four, not the entirety of number four.
So, Mr. Brown, this is Hamp Moore again. Excuse me, I misunderstood. So, you want to amend DPC number four so that it will now read as follows? Any new resident, residents must have at least a two-car garage, period?
Yes, sir.
Is that your agreement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Do we have anyone online with opposition to this request or a question? No one else online? Anything else, Commissioners? Then if not, I'll ask for a motion concerning the Flume Amendment request.
Make a motion to approve the proposed Future Land Use Map Amendment, docket number 202015 Flume. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed Flume Amendment has met the directive to amend the Flume as outlined in LU 1.1.4 of the Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Will you use a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
She's muted.
Commissioner Starks? I think we might have lost him.
Oh, we may have lost him, yeah.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vice Halli?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. The motion carried, and now I'll request a motion for the Zone Change Request.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and condition upon the General Development Plan, docket number 202059Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Will you use a second?
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Jessica, I've forgotten a text from Mr. Stark indicating that he lost connection with Zoom and is in the process of reconnecting, so you may put his name at the end of the list.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vice Halli?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Starks? Chair.
Yes, ma'am. The motion carried. Our recommendation will be for approval, and I thank you all. That brings us down to discussion items, and the first item is our 2021 meeting schedule. Mr. Peterson?
I think Jessica included in your packets the proposed meeting schedule, and I do believe we vote on that, do we not? So, if you have any questions, we'll answer them. Otherwise, I guess we need to approve that meeting schedule.
Make a motion to approve the meeting schedule.
Will you use a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vice Halli.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks. Chair Runner.
Yes, ma'am. And the motion carried. Next item is the joint interlocal agreement. Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Chair Runner. Commissioners, quite a bit's happened with this item since we, since we met a couple of weeks ago. We have been in contact with officials at both the city and the county and have come up with a proposal that is being distributed to all the legislative bodies and so we wanted to take this opportunity to do a short presentation and kind of go through memo. You all got the memo and the maps and all of the proposed changes to the joint agreement that I sent out, that we sent out in your packets and then I believe we also emailed that to you as well, so. Just a quick run through, let's see. Got to figure out my screen here. Can you all see the presentation?
We can.
Just making sure. Sometimes we don't know whether we're going to get orange boxes telling us we're doing something wrong or what on this, on this platform, so. Pretty much just follow along with the memo is how I have this presentation arranged. So Bowling Green and Warren County wish to change the voting makeup of the planning commission. This is something that we have talked about for probably close to two years now. There's been various versions presented over those two years, but this latest version was probably we've had the most input in and I believe have the just say the best proposal or best foot forward on this one. But that, given what the Bowling Green Warren County gave to us as parameters, they wanted to come up with something that's more of a data driven approach, better reflected population makeup, especially on zone changes, but also the funding mix that we currently have that funds the planning commission. Let me see. There we go. Got to let Mr. Starks back in here. So our current agreement was created, of course, under KRS one hundred dot one two one, which is basically the framework that is provided by state law to create joint planning commissions. The agreement describes the makeup and powers and duties of the planning unit. The planning commission as board, like the actions we take tonight, and then of course the board of adjustment describes the funding mix and then establishes the zoning ordinance, ordinance enforcement officers, which includes our staff, building inspectors from, from each jurisdiction. So the state law provides the framework in which to form the joint unit and then that interlocal agreement starts filling in the details of how, how we operate locally here in a community. It does take action of all six legislative bodies to amend the agreement. The agreement was last revised in January two thousand and one, so it's almost twenty years ago to the, to the date. So we're, we're right within a month of that last revision. So I think it's just as a practical matter, time to probably look at that again as it's been twenty years. So looking at the current makeup of the planning commission and trying to look at the number of appointees, the percentage of voting power, if you will, or voting representation on the planning commission currently, you see that Bowling Green with four appointees is about a third, Warren County's a third, and then the other third comes from the four smaller cities of Oakland, Plum Springs, Smith Grove and Woodburn at one each, which individually is, is eight percent of the voting makeup, potential voting makeup if all twelve members are present. If you look at the population column, you'll see that Bowling Green's roughly fifty percent, Warren County's roughly fifty percent and each of the small cities are well less than one percent of the population. And then if you look at the planning commission funding of the allocation that we get from the legislative bodies, you can see again, you can see those, those numbers there. So just looking at the memo provided on page two and reading from under the table, Bowling Green and Warren County have just under sixty seven percent of the voting power, make up over ninety eight percent of the population funding for the planning unit. The small cities collectively hold thirty three percent of the potential voting power but only represent one point four two percent of the population and only provide zero point four eight percent of the funding, so that was kind of the general I guess correction that Bowling Green and Warren County wanted to address to try to make that a more fair balance, so that was, that was one of the directives we were given. Couple of things to keep in mind as we move forward and something that I think was extremely important to maintain and in that everybody still wants is that all communities will still remain part of any long range planning decisions. So we're still going to plan together as a community. That, that will not change under this proposal. We'll still do the conference of plan together. We'll still do the zoning ordinance together. We'll still do all of those decisions that affect the greater development and land use decisions at Warren County, so that, that's one important directive we were, we were given as well is to try to maintain that relationship. The change comes in when you look at property specific applications or recommendations, zone changes being the primary focus of those. Those would be based on a new format and those, those are what would reflect the population and funding makeup as much as possible of the county. Another thing that's to keep in mind is that cities themselves will gain greater voting, voting influence on the mix on zone changes and their associated application. Reminder that many of those are in the form of recommendations that go to those legislative bodies anyway, so that, that's an important, important point in all of this. So what does this start to look like? We'll go through a couple different series of illustrations to help explain it, so. If the decision types on the left, the planning commission proposed makeup is on the right, so if it's budget and staffing, hiring, firing, discipline of employees, any financial items, future land use map changes as that's a comprehensive plan element. The comprehensive plan itself, any of the plans we do, whether they be focal point plan or area plan, be it Smith Grove or Plano or Woodburn or anywhere else. And then of course, any text amendment recommendations that go to all six bodies, legislative bodies. That'll be the same as it is today, that all twelve members of the planning commission would be involved in those decisions. Now, the change on the bottom half, if it's a zoning map amendment or, or I guess property specific applications that we have, zoning map amendment recommendations, development plan amendments, right away closures or any other kind of address specific or property specific applications, it'd be a modified member makeup. Though in Bowling Green or Warren County, that's not in a small city, so unincorporated Warren County, it'd be four county appointees and four city of Bowling Green appointees, for a total of eight members for those decisions and five would make the simple majority quorum. In a small city or within a quarter mile of its boundary, it would be the four Warren County appointees and the small city appointee for five members total and three would make a quorum. So we'll move on and look a little bit closer at that. So scenario one, which was again, all twelve members of the board would be making those decisions. This is the exact same table as before because that, that hasn't changed. Again, we're going to continue to plan together. And the operations of the planning commission, staffing, all of that would still be all twelve members. Scenario two would be Warren County, if it's a vote on property that's in Warren County or within the corporate limits of Bowling Green, City of Bowling Green, then it would be the four Bowling Green appointees and then the four Warren County appointees. And you'll see that the share of the voting power goes up from thirty three percent as it is currently to fifty percent in, in County and Bowling Green. So here's the map, I think, that you all have in your packets. So if it's in the yellow, which is basically the city of limits of Bowling Green, or the gray, which is the unincorporated area of Warren County, that's not part of one of the small cities areas, then again, it would be the four city of Bowling Green appointees and the four Warren County fiscal court appointees that would hear those applications. The third scenario again would be if it's in a small city, city limits or within a quarter mile of those city limits, then it would be the one small city appointee and then the four Warren County appointees. And you would see that the voting influence for that area would go from eight percent for the small cities up to twenty percent. So you'd have greater influence within your city limits and within that quarter mile of the city limits for those small cities. And Bowling Green would not, appointees would not participate in those decisions. Running through that quickly, you'll see that, so the city limits of the small cities are the, I guess darker colors you see on the map and then the orange would be that quarter mile boundary, so it'd be anywhere in those areas where that scenario three would take place. Again, looking at Smith Grove here, Smith Grove city limits is within the green and then that is the greater boundary here in the orange that they would also vote. So in this scenario, it would be the four Warren County appointees and then Smith Grove appointing, which is currently Commissioner Ritchie. Looking at Oakland, you have the same, same situation here. You've got the, I guess maroon color is Oakland. Orange would be the expanded boundary. This would be the four Warren County appointees and then our Oakland appointee currently Commissioner Ballance. Plum Springs gets a little more interesting because it's butts up against the city of Bowling Green city limits. But if you're within that purple, which is current Plum Springs city limits or within the orange, including this area here and the little square there and then, then this little piece here, that would be the four Warren County appointees plus the current Plum Springs representative, Commissioner Clark. And then again, if it's in the gray, in the four, the gray or the yellow, it would be the four Warren County fiscal court appointees and the four city of Bowling Green appointees. And then last but not least is Woodburn. You see the gray is the current Woodburn city limits and then that expanded quarter mile boundary would be the four Warren County fiscal court appointees and the one Woodburn appointee, which is currently Commissioner Blackburn. So going forward, November twenty fifth, we sent out everything to pretty much everybody. December first, the city of Bowling Green had its first reading. It did pass its first reading four to one. Tomorrow morning, the fiscal court will be having its first reading of the proposed changes. And then December through February, the other small cities will be considering those. We've heard back from Smith Grove and their first reading will be January twenty fifth to consider these, these changes. Ultimately, all six legislative bodies will have to vote to change the agreement before the changes would take place throughout all of Warren County. So I'll, I'll pause here. I do have more slides. I've kind of tried to anticipate a couple of questions, but I'll pause here and just see if you all have any questions to this point.
So Ben, what happens if everybody doesn't approve it?
Okay, I'll move straight into my next slide. But let me, I'll just go through the slides real quick. That is my last set. So draft meet, structure, how will this work? So this is tentative. We didn't put a lot of time in this right now because we don't know if it's, if it's going to pass yet, but tentatively, our outline is that every other month, we would have full board meeting. So six meetings a year, we would, all twelve members would get together. Any called meetings we have to have, obviously that would have happened, plus our annual training, we would all get together as well, so probably seven meetings a year. We would all, all twelve get together. So when we have those meetings, that would be the points where you would hear the scenario one, two or three items. Everything would be allowed. So if you have a future land use map amendment, you would have to hit one of those proposed dates. If you, if, all of our financial considerations and budgets approvals and staffing considerations would have to hit one of those dates or have a called meeting where we're all twelve present. And then we pick these specific dates to coincide with budgeting stuff, so that's the natural times that we approve budgets and all of that good stuff, so. All other meetings would be not at, all the other meetings would be Bowling Green Warren County specific applications only. That's honestly probably ninety five to ninety eight percent of all of our applications occur in those areas anyway. So that, that would be, that would be when those, those could be heard pretty much anytime. But there would not be any of the scenario one or scenario three items allowed during the meetings that are not on this date. So what was scenario one? Again, the operations, the staffing, the planning stuff. Scenario three was the small cities situations. Minutes approvals, we believe we've got this figured out, so basically after each meeting, we would send out summary minutes after they're created to all board members. And of course, there would be links. We typically post these meetings online within a day or two after the, the meeting. And we would ask you to take a look at those minutes, look at online and see if anybody had any objections or changes to those minutes and then if there wasn't, then a quorum of planning commission members present at the next meeting, whoever that is would be able to just attest that that reflected, reflected the adequate record of those, of that meeting. Again, commissioners, this is the way it currently is now. You only get paid for meetings attended. It allowed us to keep funding levels the same, especially in those small cities. That was important. We didn't want to get into trying to negotiate more or less money for funding levels, so we just, again, trying to do data driven approach, it just matches the current population as much as possible, which then reflects the funding levels. There'd be no other changes to any other boards. They would continue to operate as they currently do. And then now to Commissioner Volker's question, it gets complicated. The I, I'm not going to read these, these summaries to you, but essentially at any time, any of the legislative bodies can withdraw from the current agreement or any other agreement made at any time and make their own independent planning unit. So what does independent mean? It means they have their own staff, their own boards, their own, their own thing completely. And then there's about ten different ways that could be done as well, so. The other language here at the top, one twenty one and one seventeen seemingly prevents, and I say seemingly because it's largely untested, but seemingly prevents any, nobody can just pull out and then reform a joint planning commission without. asking everybody, interrogates the, the terrible term they use, but without asking everybody else to be a part of it and then offer reasonable terms to, to rejoin. So the, the law, case law, according to my little land use and zoning law book that Hampton and I look at frequently, the case law is made to compel a joint planning unit as much as possible. So I won't spend any more time on that point. Why, one, it's unclear and largely untested in courts. This, this discussion doesn't come up too, too often. Last path, if there's disagreements, is to just go back and revise the agreement where all parties are accepting of changes. Again, hope that's not necessary with, with this proposal. There may be something we missed, something we have not thought of. But again, we've taken that straight data-driven approach as much as possible of that pop, based on population. But there are plenty, plenty of other options. Again, you withdraw from the joint agreement, you cannot have planning and zoning at all. And that would be, any of those six bodies can make that decision. You could withdraw from the agreement, form your own independent planning unit, have completely separate staff, do, do whatever you want to do, or honestly, any, any variation of the above that's within the framework. And, and there are, there are many examples out there. So that's a really hard question to, to answer at this point. So here's just some considerations, and this is the last slide. So if you think, if an entity was thinking about going, going on their own, you probably, first question you'd ask is, would you still want planning and zoning in your jurisdiction? Obviously, I'm, I'm a big proponent of, I hope you will. But if not, then you would, then that entity could take action, just abolish all ordinances pertaining to planning and zoning. And then that would be the end of it. If they do want to go alone, they would have to read, re-adopt or create a whole new comprehensive plan, re-adopt or create a whole new zoning ordinance, re-adopt the current or create a whole new zoning ordinance. And you have to have a comprehensive plan in place before you can do that. If you want subdivision regulations, you would do this, do likewise there, re-adopt or create subregs. And then you would have to reconstitute any applicable boards that you would, that you would want to continue with as well. And it's not just the planning commission board, there's the Board of Adjustment, there's the Design Review Board that covers Lovers, Langton Cemetery Road, there's the University District, there's the Historic Preservation Board, and then we have the Cemetery Board too. So we'd have to figure out how to, how to handle all of that. And then just some other considerations that, that have been discussed. The Metropolitan Planning Organization would, would have to be addressed if, if, if depending on what happened. There are historic districts and a certified local government agreement that goes along with that. That is an agreement between essentially the City of Bowling Green, the Planning Commission, as, as we administer those historic districts. And then it's through the State Historic Preservation Office and the U.S. National Park Service that is in place. That would have to be addressed. And then, of course, just staffing and resources. How would that be distributed and redistributed? So that's a complete summary of everything I thought of to this point, so.
And this is Rick Starks. First, I want to thank you for sharing this information with us. Second, I apologize to you and staff and other commissioners for being kicked off the internet tonight. So my connectivity is not working. I apologize for that. But, but I do want to thank you for sharing this information regarding the agreement between the various jurisdictions. It's been very informative and it's educated me a lot as to what's going on in a lot of these areas. So I appreciate that.
So Ben, I'm dating all the way back to the first time you ever presented this. I think I asked this question, but I don't remember the answer. Help me understand why we don't, why the, the, the flume amendments are not, are, are voted on by the full body, but the zone changes are not?
Okay, I'll give you the, the, the best answer I know how. It's very simple because they are, the future land use map is an element of a comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan is the guiding document that is for all the planning of the entire county. It is not an individual property owner type of thing. The way we amend the future land use map here, gotta be careful, I guess, how I state this. It is not standard planning practice. Future land use maps are only intended to be amended once every five years. I don't know how else to say it.
Okay. And so for tonight's meeting, we would have had the full body voting on three of these and the individual portions of the body voting on the remainder. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Was very diplomatically presented. I like that answer.
Part of my job is to try to keep you all happy.
Ben, I guess my question is, there's gonna have to be quite a bit of planning in order to also not upset the public, I guess, with timing of getting on an agenda. Is that a fair question, I guess?
Sure. And I think we've generally outlined this. That's one of the reasons that I favor this proposal over any of the past versions I've seen because this is much, much easier to administer than some of the other iterations. Just, just from the simple fact that we can, we, I, I believe we can administer it. I don't know how, how better to, can't find the words to better explain that. But I think we can handle this fairly easily and it will not delay, should not delay things. Now, back to the kind of future land use map thing, that is, that is a concern. But I guess, again, it's not standard practice to amend the future land use map as much as we do. So staff has looked at that several times, several different ways. And the reasons why we may be doing that, and if we, fortunately, we've been extremely busy this year. We're gonna finish this year probably second or third all-time high in activity, believe it or not, even with COVID. And so one of the things we have on our plate is to look at future land use map revisions. And I know we've talked about that a couple of times. And so if we can get our head around that and get a consensus on that, I think that will greatly reduce, reduce the need for these future land use map amendments. And some of the changes we've already made have already had a, had a favorable impact towards that.
And what do you see as the major challenges for, for staff related to this, this proposal? Are there any?
You know, I, I think with this version, it's just gonna be implementing it. And then like with everything new or different, will be the things we hadn't thought of. You know, but sometimes we don't know till we know. But I don't, I don't foresee any major challenges with implementing this version. I think we can, we can handle it. And I think it can, can be honestly very positive.
Thank you.
Ben, can you clarify one thing in Plum Springs area? The city commission brought it up last night, that part of Plum Springs is connected to them. And the things that are done in Plum Springs could possibly help or hinder the city. The city at no time will be voting on anything in Plum Springs, even though they're attached to it?
So if I'm understanding your, your question is, what happens right here? When, on all the areas that Bowling Green connects to Plum Springs?
Yeah, where the city connects.
Yeah, so.
The city was concerned last night that they would have a say-so about areas that connect to Plum Springs.
Yeah. So the only answer I can give to that is if it's purple or orange, you're gonna have twenty percent of the vote. If it's, if it's gray or yellow, you will have no vote.
And after we talked the other day, were you able to pull zone changes and see how many were in the four small communities this year?
I have not had a chance to do that. Rachel put you on the spot as well, but I can only think of one in Smiths Grove. And I don't know if we've had any more or not.
I can look in the docket book really quick since they're labeled by place.
Yeah. So, so this has been a difficult exercise at best for, for staff for a number of reasons. And Hampton too, for that matter. And I'll, you know, Hampton, if you want to say anything, please jump in. But the, the main thing I think that we have to, or that, that I make sure we wanted to accomplish was that we keep the joint nature of the planning commission. And we need to plan together as a community. And so that was the primary goal. We don't want to, we certainly never want to mess up the successes that we've had in this community over the years, decade after decade. And I think, you know, biased obviously, but I think that is in large part to the joint planning nature that we, of this community that we have, the cooperation, the unified development code. And it's not just the zone change decisions, it's the zoning enforcement side of things. It's the subdivision regulations. It's, it's all of those things. Having that unified development code gives us an advantage. I've worked in other communities that do not have much going on, to put it as politely as I can. And sometimes it's not very fun, just sitting around waiting, wondering if you're actually gonna ever get any jobs come to your community or not, or whether or not there's ever gonna be a commercial development. So, you know, it's, it's hard to balance all of that. And I, I think that there's no perfect solution probably. But, you know, we, we've got to make sure we stay together as a community and continue to plan as a community. And I think everybody has that same goal and mindset on the forefront.
Yeah, Ben, speaking from a community and economic development standpoint, I can see a lot of positives in this, like, like you indicated a few minutes ago, especially from an economic and industrial development, recruiting standpoint, and future development opportunities. If you've got unified cities and bodies working together more closely, I just think nothing but positive can, can come from that. So I think it's, I also think it's a good proposal too.
I think one of the things that's come up in the smaller cities is if they don't agree with it, are they gonna lose some of the benefits of having county fire, county sheriff, county things that we have now? If we don't agree to it, are we gonna lose some of those things? That's a big concern to a lot of people.
Obviously, we as the planning commission have no bearing or say in any of that. That's completely a fiscal court decision or action. And I, I will say that, I guess that's a volunteer fire district there. So they, if they took some sort of punitive, I guess, approach to it, which I do not believe they're, they're considering, that if they did that, they would be hurting more than just the small, the city limits and the residents of Plum Springs. It would be that whole district and area. So I, I do not believe they would, they would take that tact. But that would be a question for the fiscal court and not necessarily the planning commission.
Thank you.
Then to that end, I mean, again, planning commission has no say in this. We're kind of doing this as an informational thing, just, you know, as I told you last meeting, we didn't really have, didn't really know what the current version says. And then a lot has, has changed since that meeting. So this'll, this, this will be strictly a vote by each legislative body. And we'll all see, see what we come out with. But we're going to, we're going to help the community as much as we can in any way we can. Hampton, do you have anything to add?
No, Ben, you've done as usual, an excellent job of organizing your thoughts and presenting this, this program. I think what's important is for us all to try to look beyond what might be in our individual parochial best interests and try to do as we do every first and third Thursday, and that is to try to decide what's in the best interest of, of all of Warren County and making sure that decisions made about planning are done by the entire planning commission and that decisions about zoning are made by a, a body of less than that number, which is still fairly representative of the population that's involved. So I, I hope that all six municipalities, all five municipalities and the one, and the fiscal court can try to do what's in the best interest of, of all of us. And, and if we do, I think we'll continue to do the good job we've done on not only planning, but also on zoning.
Unless there's more questions, Chair Runner, that's all I have.
Any other comments, commissioners, before we adjourn?
I do have an answer to the question if anyone is curious. In 2014, there was one zone change in Smiths Grove. 2015 and 16, there were no zone changes in the small incorporated cities. Seventeen, there was one in Woodburn, one in Plum Springs. Eighteen, two in Plum Springs and two in Smiths Grove and zero in 2019 and 2020.
Four was our highest total. You could probably, any one year. So you could probably add one or two more to that with the expanded territories that are within a quarter mile boundary.
I thought there was one in Smiths Grove. Yeah, there was one in Smiths Grove, wasn't there?
So I thought it was recent, and the last one I could think of was Speedway, and that was in 2018. October, so time flies, right?
Is that when the, when the Smiths Grove mayor came and presented? That was in 2018?
Yep.
Yeah, it does fly.
I guess we've been doing Zoom meetings since March, almost a whole year.
That's true. That's true. See, you guys are doing such a great job. We just don't even know we're here.
Well, we appreciate you all, truly, truly.
Thanks again for all your hard work on this.
If there's nothing else, then meetings adjourned and I thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.